Are we ready?
Yes.
I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the Oregon City Commission, and this is our regular meeting for Wednesday, October the first. We have no monitor. Does that mean we are not on?
That's because Doug had the changer.
Yeah.
Oh.
I forgot to train you.
I haven't gone into training yet. No, I haven't gone into training.
We always count on being able to see the monitor, and it's not on yet tonight. But it sounds as if we have begun. So with that, I would like you to -- I guess we need to introduce ourselves. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Damon Mayby, Commission President.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Daphne West, City Commissioner.
Is that that? I'm Trent Timbal, City Commissioner.
Please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we have a very important -- we have a little sound problem first. Next, we have a very exciting thing to do. It's always a pleasure to administer the oath of office to new police officers. And this evening, we have two. So to that end, I will introduce our Police Chief Gordon Harris to administer the oath and introduce us to the new officers.
Mayor and Commissioners, tonight, we have two oaths to administer. One will be to our newest reserve officer and also to our newest police officer. I'd like to start out with our newest reserve officer, Jessica Ray. If she'd come forward. Jessica just joined our department. She's a graduate of Reynolds High School and is currently attending Portland State University. She was with the Fairview Police Department as a reserve and attended the inter-agency Reserve Academy in Clackamas County in 2006, 2007, and has moved over to the Oregon City Police Department. Moved up.
Welcome. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Jessica Ray, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully performing my duties.
As a reserve police officer.
As a reserve police officer.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
Would Shane Woodward please come forward? Shane fills our newest police officer's position that was formed in this year's budget, the 35th position for the police department. Shane was hired September 29th, lives in Washego, Washington. Quite a bit of the crowd we have here tonight is not for a land use hearing. It is actually for Shane, all the cameras. He's joined here tonight by a lot of family, including his wife, Desiree, and his son, Zachary, and daughter, Morgan. He's a graduate of Battleground High School, and he comes to us from Fred Meyer, where he managed loss prevention at the Oregon City Store.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Shane Woodward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the law.
That I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully -- performing my duties.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Let's make sure you've gotten all the pictures.
Get them all. Get up from here.
Smile like you mean it.
If you're for Officer Woodward, please stand up. That's a nice support group.
It's wonderful to have a support group like that, and we really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have an exciting presentation. Well, we're going to have no one left when you guys all leave. You could stay. We have some good land use hearings and some potholes to fill and some --
We're not going to happen today.
Yes. Next, we have a very exciting presentation. We had a very exciting day last Friday when Governor Kulungoski came to Oregon City and announced the recipients of the Main Street Program. And we had two of our own, our own Commissioner Daphne West and Don Slack, both on our Main Street Committee, who are going to share with you some of the highlights of that presentation. You're going to go get them over there?
Claire Mette is our secretary, and she wanted to join us.
Great. Oh, please.
Yes, Colonel.
And Claire Mette as well.
Well, thank you for having us this evening.
You had to come. It's your obligation as a city commissioner.
Yes. I'm wearing another hat. As Mayor Norris was saying, Governor Kulungoski and Mary Oberst were here to present these awards, as well as some other very special people. Barbara Sidway was in -- came out from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and Lauren Atkins was also here from the National Trust Main Street Center to give us our award. We had, oh, I'd say, over 100 people there to share in our celebration. It wasn't only just Oregon City that received a Main Street Award. There was three other communities that did: Albany, Roseburg, Baker City, and us. There was four performing Main Streets at the top level you could be in the state of Oregon. So we were very proud to be among the group.
This is a sign that will go -- actually, we have multiple signs, the same sign that would go at the boundary of the district, talking about the fact that we're a Main Street city and --
We could say Claire, though.
Turn it -- turn it the other way. The other way.
The other way.
Yep, there we go.
And we also -- we also received -- we also received this certificate. And I just wanted to thank commission members, because many of you helped us as we were on a fast track to put the application in back in August. And also, I'd like to thank the city staff, who were immensely helpful in doing what we've got to do. And I think it's all a sign, this whole Oregon Street project is not about businesses, it's about partnership with not only the city and the county and other entities and citizens in the community. So I'm thankful for all the support we've had. We are on a fast track now, again. We are in the midst of forming our committees and committee training, and we're looking forward to a joint session with you next Tuesday. So, thank you.
And thank you to all of you. You have put in an enormous number of hours, and you're having, I know, weekly meetings to try to organize the Main Street Program. And that certainly, we understand, you made a dynamite presentation down at the -- down in Salem to the Oregon Education --
To the Main Street Board.
The Main Street Review Board, and then obviously, you made a huge impression on the governor and his wife, who -- his wife, Mary Oberst, is actually very responsible for getting the Main Street -- Oregon Main Street Program getting going again in Oregon. So, thank you for all your work.
We would like to loan this to the city commission until we have our own Main Street office downtown, which we want to put on display.
We will hang that with honor. Thank you very much. Our next presentation is from the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. We like all of our boards and commissions to give us an update annually on goals and accomplishments and achievements, and so we're glad to have you here today.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. My name is Rita Baker, and I'm coordinator to the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. And to my left is our Chair, Sarah Miller.
Hi.
It's a privilege and a pleasure to address you this evening and to give you a summary of our annual report for 2007. I'll also give you a little preview for our activities in 2008. By way of background, the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council was formed and recognized in 2004, and recognized by Oregon City in 2004 as well. We were recognized by the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board in 2006. The council is made up of interested landowners and residents within a 50-square-mile area, which encompasses our watershed area between the Clackamas and Malala Rivers. Within our watershed are three primary streams: the Beaver, the Parrot, and the Abernathy Creek. The council operates under the guidance of the Oregon Watershed -- Oregon Plan for Salmon and Watersheds, which seeks to restore salmon runs, to improve water quality, and to enhance watersheds within the community. The council is and has been funded by the Clackamas County Soil and Water Conservation Districts, the Metro South Grants, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Grants, and through fundraising activities. Projects that have been undertaken in 2007 include three restoration projects. The first two are phases within Abernathy Creek that involve the removal of trash and invasives and planting of natives. And Phase Two involved Abernathy Creek Park, removal of an expanse of asphalt. And I believe in November, they're going to be planting some new native plants in that area as well. The third project was along Coffield Creek, west of Highway 213. We call it Two's Ponds, where again, you have removal of trash and invasives and planting of new native plants. The council has collaborated with the regional government of Metro on land purchases, associated the Green Space Bond Measure. It has participated in the Oregon Farmers Market by having a plant stand, and has participated in the Clackamas Community College's Earth Day events. It's also worked closely with SOLV in the Down by the Riverside events and city cleanup. In September, the council was awarded an almost $50,000 grant from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, and we're very excited about that. The project will be a watershed assessment that will look and create an action plan for us, and will be completed in 2010. We're inviting everybody who is interested to come and participate with us. And we have a handy-dandy phone number, which I'm not sure where your cameras are, but --
They said up there.
Up there.
Yeah. They will catch the phone number, but you can read it.
Okay. The phone number is 503-427-0439, and our email address is gocwc@al.com. And so with that, I will conclude my presentation, and Sarah and I are available for any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
No. Continue.
Thank you very much.
Keep updating us on that. It's somewhat of a unique watershed council. You -- most watershed councils are associated with a given river basin. This one is associated with specific streams.
Didn't we give you some funding from Metro Enhancement for one of those projects?
Three of them.
Which was meant by Metro South.
Yeah, several.
For those three. Oh, you meant Metro South. Okay. That's our Metro Enhancement Grant Program.
Yes, yes. And we're very grateful for that.
Yes, oh, thank you.
And we've done good things with it.
Good.
Hope to do so in the future again.
So how many of you are there?
Well, it has fluctuated somewhat, as organizations do, but I think at our height, we've had 12, and we've got a core group with big hearts who work very hard.
We understand that.
But we certainly have a need and a wish to include more people, so please, as I said, please call us at 503-427-0439, if you'd like to participate.
Thank you for that report. We may get to involve some cleanup projects for our -- to take care of Oregon Day.
Ah.
Oregon 150 next year, on March 16th.
May 16.
May 16th. Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Next, we have a proclamation, which actually has already been used, but the day is not here. Annually, when the oldest rivalry, the oldest football rivalry, rivalry west of the Mississippi occurs, there is a wonderful traditional event that happens, and that is the football breakfast between the Westland team and staff and parents, and the Oregon City High School team and staff and parents. It's put on by the Optimist Club and decorated by the cheerleaders, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful occasion, and they always have an inspirational speaker. And the Westland mayor and the Oregon City mayor get to issue challenges to each other. Well, in the absence of the Westland mayor, I got to speak for him, and I'm just sure that he promised that if Oregon City High School wins, that he will hang upside down on the Oregon City Bridge, that he will walk up the steps of City Hall on his hands and knees, and thirdly, he will climb up to the pinnacle of the elevator and shout, "Go pioneers!" So if that's incorrect, Mayor King, please give me a call. And so toward that end, we also issued this proclamation. Oregon City-Westland Rivalry Day. Whereas the cities of Oregon City and Westland wish to recognize the efforts of their citizens to create and maintain a positive family environment, where children can learn the value of constructive competition, and whereas the cities of Oregon City and Westland value tradition and history as essential parts of their communities, and whereas Oregon City High School and Westland High School, formerly known as Union High School, have competed valiantly in the sport of football continuously since 1921, and whereas on October 3rd, 2008, the teams representing these schools will renew their annual rivalry for the 87th time -- pretty incredible -- whereas this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi and therefore worthy of recognition, and whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the pioneers again defeat the Lions, and the City Council of Westland desires the Lions again defeat the pioneers. And now, we, the City Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of Westland, hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual Gridiron Classic and support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming October 3rd to be Oregon City-Westland Rivalry Day. We further recommend, in the spirit of the day, that all citizens wear clothing of the appropriate colors -- that would be red and white -- and refrain from crossing the bridge unless business requires until game time. So signed. And --
Yeah.
It's also true that since I've been mayor in 2003, the Oregon City team has yet to win, but I declare that it's not my fault.
Ah.
But we think we have a really excellent chance of winning on Friday night, so go pioneers.
I want to ask you something about that, because it was one year when I was Commission President, and you had me step in on that, and Mayor King wasn't there on that date. Does he ever show up for that?
Oh, yes. He was there last year.
Oh, he was? Okay. Because there might be a common theme here.
No.
That I don't know if that was new stipulations that we were putting on this year or what, so, okay.
Okay, next.
That's all.
All right. Let's move into citizen comment, and I'll turn that over to Commission President Damon Mayby. And we ask that when you come to the microphone that you please state your name clearly and the city in which you reside, and then you may speak to us for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Commissioner Mayby.
Madam Mayor, we have one person who's signed up to comment, and as soon as he's done, he'll finish filling out his comment card, and that is Paul Edgar.
Thank you. This is the hot one. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. I came before you primarily to talk about the Kanema Neighborhood Association as the land use chair and about our recent neighborhood meeting. We had 26 residents of Kanema show up. We had some commission candidates running for the office and talked about a lot of issues. But one of the issues that we posed to the -- our neighborhood was what was the most important issue that they felt was important to Kanema, that we should be following up on. And it sounded like, and we had a pretty open discussion with just about everyone chiming in, was safety on our roads. And we had -- I had one of the neighbors, a young woman, a single mother, who comes home, picks up her kids from daycare. She wrote a message to me, and she wanted me to read it at our meeting. She says that she normally comes into the neighborhood and curls down from South End Road, 5th, to get down there, because she can't honestly put her children's lives in danger trying to make a left turn on McLaughlin. She says the cars come from either side into the bowl, coming down the hill from either side. And we'd like to get Chief to do some monitoring of the speeds in Kanema as we work with the Transportation Committee into the future, trying to understand what we can do. But we know we need to get some left turn capabilities. We know we're probably going to need some stoplights or something like that. Some -- people can't walk across the street. One of the neighbors down the road down there was telling me, didn't attend the meeting, but just about one of the paper boys that was killed right in front of their house many years ago, trying to get back and forth just delivering papers. And so the -- these people are afraid a rear-end collision, if you're parked, trying to make a left turn, can be a life-altering event, particularly when you have cars coming through Kanema, you know, at 40, 50, 60 miles an hour, and that's regular. So way over any reasonable speed limit. So what kind of brought this to attention was is that you guys are doing things downtown Oregon City to try to make it more friendly towards business and people, parking and doing things. We'd like to put it onto your radar map, and we're going to work -- try to work through an ordinary process of going through your committees, but we want it to be on your roadmap. We want you thinking about it, because things don't happen instantaneously. We know that. But we don't want anybody killed. We don't want any child killed. We want business in Kanema. The commercial strip along McLaughlin is zoned commercial, and no one really wants to put a business down there. You can't get off of it. You can't get onto it. You can't do anything with it. So we think that it's important to collaborate with you and with all parties, and we'd like it to be a priority with you, with us, starting now, to where we can start to try to get a handle on it, get reasonable, agreed-to understandings and recommendations, all of us working together. But we want to make Kanema safe, also realize that the narrow streets up the hill are equally dangerous. So it's not just McLaughlin. We want you to -- we want to get your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it? Commissioner Mayby?
Just to briefly respond to some of the concerns that Paul's brought up, I have always kind of thought that at the very least, Kanema needs one on-demand stoplight, so that you can either -- and I'm going to get the streets wrong, and I apologize, but like Genong, where it's kind of the -- you can go up it and then get to any place else in Kanema once you've crossed that traffic. The difficulty being, it's a state highway, so we do have to work with the state on that.
Hedges.
Hedges, that's it. I knew I was going to get it alphabetically wrong. I always do. So that is the case, and I'm just going to take the time now rather than during -- at the end of the meeting. Both Commissioner Tidwell and I would like to express that we would have loved to have been at the Kanema meeting. We just misunderstood what the communications were, that it was an actual candidate's forum. By the time I knew what date it was, I had another commitment. But by no means did we intend to diss Kanema by not attending. It was just a miscommunication situation. There will be other opportunities for them to hear. We've got -- I'll be announcing it during the thing, but there's a multi-neighborhood association chamber. That's the word.
Chamber, October 14th.
So please bring those questions and concerns there, and we'll, I'm sure, be more than happy to hash them out. I see Rocky's nodding, so I'm sure he'll be there, too.
Yeah. It was unclear in the communication I received that it was a candidate's fair as well, so Kanema.
And as well for I, it was unclear. And I think when we're talking about collaborating with all parties, you want to make sure that's very clear, so.
Commissioner Neely.
I just wanted to mention that the forum that's coming up is Joint Chamber, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and Park Place Neighborhood Association.
Yeah. It's an all-city forum, and it should be a --
And merchants association.
And merchants association.
And what date does that --
It's October -- Tuesday, October 14th, at Abernathy Center and --
6:30 to 8:30.
6:30 to 8:30. Opportunity to meet all the city commission candidates. All right. Let's move on, then, to general adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda that needs reordering or pulled for separate consideration? Commissioner Neely.
Yeah, I would like -- yes, I'd like to have pulled Agenda Item 7B.
Did he say B or D?
B. The Restructure of Covenant. Okay.
Bravo.
Anything else? Otherwise, we will take the agenda, then, in the order in which it comes in, the order in which it is listed. First, we have the second reading, which is the final reading of an ordinance, 81016, annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 0706. May I have a motion for adoption? Commissioner Mayby.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, this is approving what has already been voted on, but I would -- and as such, I would like to move approval of AN 1016.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner West. For the second reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 08-1016, an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City.
Thank you very much. Is there a comment or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West. Aye. Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And the second ordinance, also for final reading, is also that, which has been approved by the voters of the city, ordinance number 8-1017, also an annexation to the city of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 0707. Is there a motion?
0707.
An 0707. An 0707.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tidwell and seconded by?
Commissioner Mayby.
Commissioner Mayby. Mr. Sullivan, please.
This is ordinance number 08-1017, an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City.
Thank you. Is there a comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West. Aye. Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have the awarding of a personal services agreement for master planning service for our Public Works Department Operations Center. For that, staff, Nancy Crashour, our Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. What we're asking you to do this evening is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with DECA Architecture for taking us through the -- some of the land use process that we need to go through before we can start implementing our operations facilities plan. The plan was actually completed in December 2005, and we have since then used the plan to acquire certain properties. We have a few modifications we would like to make to the facilities plan, and then before we can start doing any site grading, utilities, or construction, we need to comply with our own design zoning code, and that we are choosing to go seek a land use approval process through Chapter 17.64, which is out of zoning master plans. And so in addition to getting us through the land use process, this contract will be making some modifications to our facilities plan, prioritizing improvements, and also looking at funding strategies in terms of whether or not we can do it on our own, or if we need to sell some bonds or get some loans, that kind of thing. So that kind of a financial strategy will be developed based on the prioritization of the -- this plan, and then some slight revisions to it. We had six consulting firms submitted proposals. They are listed in your staff report. The fee ranges, the fee estimates for the six firms ranged from $76,000, approximately $77,000, to approximately $259,000. We had a panel of three that reviewed the proposals and scored them based on scoring criteria that was described in the request for proposals packet, and -- criteria that was described in the request for proposals packet, and we have concluded that we would recommend that you sign a contract with DECA Architecture in the amount of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we get moving on this project. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Mayby.
Yeah, typically, we don't see such a huge range of, do you have any feedback on why we went from seventy-seven to three times as much? I mean, plus or minus ten percent's a pretty typical, and...
We had, the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar one was way on the edge. We had three in the eighty to a hundred thousand dollar range, and there was one at a hundred and thirty-four thousand and one hundred, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. So we believe that this particular firm probably is not that familiar with our master planning process.
The ones that were on the far end.
Right, and they were really throwing a lot more work at it than is necessary.
But it wasn't that they were providing some sort of much better, gold-plated servicing.
In this case, in this case, they were proposing services and times of, the amount of time it would take to prepare certain things in excess of what we need.
Because I just don't recall in my four years of being here that I've ever seen such a, I mean, apples and oranges here, I mean, to a degree. I mean, things around the same thing, but just astronomical differences.
Yes, I agree, and usually, this is a little unusual, too. I mean, even Public Works isn't used to doing a master plan project like this, land use application with ancillary items, but even on some of our utility capital improvement projects, there'll be a range, but this is significant, and sometimes it's very worthwhile to pay for the higher level services because you know they are either, they read the, they presented a more comprehensive work scope which you indeed need. But in this case, we think that DECA is going to do a great job, they know what we need, and, plus, they do, the good news is they also have the background. Now, we didn't use that as a scoring, that wasn't one of our criteria, but they are familiar, already familiar with the site, so they can, I think that'll actually be beneficial.
So in the interest, in the interest then of public accountability, as the citizens' voice, I then have to ask the opposite question, so, I know we know DECA because they did the master plan, but are we concerned that there may be change orders that raises the cost?
Actually, we, the only change order that we could anticipate at this time is, right now, they believe that they can do the planning application themselves. They have on their project team Harper Huff Peterson Regalas, who has an actual land use planner on staff, and if we find that the architects are, would rather get the planner involved, then we would bring the planner in from Harper Huff Peterson Regalas, and I believe they gave us a cost estimate already for then, it was about five thousand dollars in addition. But that's the only thing at this point that we anticipate as being a change order.
So it wouldn't be, it would not be a situation where the one firm that has it at two hundred thousand could all, you know, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, and they're not going to be coming back to us saying, well, we're adding on this cost and this cost, and they get up to a hundred and ninety thousand?
No, I don't expect that at all, and in fact, we, John Lewis purposely had a lengthy conversation with DECA, making sure that they, they really had a full understanding of what we needed, and they do, so I think we'll be fine.
Commissioner West?
I did have a thing.
Okay. Commissioner Neely?
From my reading of the document, it appears that this intended revision so soon after we pass, this is based on the fact we have acquired properties, and we have to more finely determine how they're going to be used in terms of our facility management.
That's right. We have some changes in facility ideas for storage, and then also coupled with the fact that City Hall may be moving, we would probably be looking at getting the City's Hall Public Work staff into the Operations Center facilities, which is a change.
While you have the microphone, did you wish to make a motion?
No, well, I will, momentarily, but why, I noticed here they're going to be, there's provisions for attending up to two Historic Review Board meetings. I presume they're going to do more than attend them, though.
We're paying for them to show up and present and discuss.
Very good. For that, I would move that we go ahead and award the, award for the personal service agreement for master planning services for Oregon City Public Works Department Operations Centers to DECA Architecture for the projected amount of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing, and that is that for the education of the public here, the, these costs will be coming out of the water, sewer, and storm utility funds and the street operations fund.
That's important to know. Now, may I have a second to the motion?
Second, no SDCs?
No system development charges.
Why?
You can't.
Well, I'm letting the public know. I know the answer.
All right.
Why not, why can you not allow?
It's not allowed by statute.
Because?
State law.
Because it's not addressing capacity for future development.
It doesn't affect a particular street that's on the capital improvement plan. It's got to be spent on a project in the capital improvement plan of any of those three areas.
But wouldn't facilities, construction be part of the SDCs that we have to spend because we're building, we need to do this because we've had growth?
You can set aside some amount for administration, and...
But because...
My understanding is you're not to use system development charges on facilities for staff, public staff, and that...
That's correct, on staff.
We can use it for planning, for master planning, for growth, et cetera, but not for building buildings for the city staff.
You got to segregate it, now.
Yeah, so in layman's terms, that eighty-five house development SDCs can't be used to build a better garage for our dump trucks.
That's right.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that's moved by Commissioner Neely and seconded by Commissioner Mayby. Is there further discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next, we have the continuation, a motion for a continuation of a public hearing. This is for the amendments that the Planning Commission is working on for our zoning and development codes, and we'd like to have a motion to continue this to November nineteenth, two thousand and eight. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Mayby?
I will move to begin the discussion, but my question is, why, what, why do we need to extend it? But I'll move the extension because there's clearly no one here prepared to talk about it, so.
I will second, and then we can have the discussion.
All right, moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Neely, and now Dan Rettler.
One of the things that we have to do is send out a measure...
Doesn't sound like you're on.
He volumes it up.
Well, they put...
There we go.
One of the things we have to do on this process is send out a Measure fifty-six notice, and we've been on this process for several months, and we've probably sent that notice out over six months ago. So when we do that, we publish the first Planning Commission public hearing, and then we also publish, based on our best guess, the city commission first public hearing. And back in the early spring, we had hoped that it would reach you by tonight, and we're not ready because of the number of hearings we've had with the Planning Commission and some of the complexities in, really, a couple of things. One is, we're still working on the Beaver Creek Code, and we're also working on a Title thirteen code which addresses Metro's nature in the neighborhoods, the program, and we're actually trying to come up with our own code. One of the options Metro has is to adopt their model code, which is sixty-some pages. We're really the only city in the metro region that is trying to come up with our own code that's simpler, but as effective as the Metro Model Code, so that's taking a bit of time, but we hope to be back here in late November.
Mr. Rettler, didn't Legoswoop go past their own Title thirteen codes?
I don't believe so.
They adopted the Metro Code? Because I thought they did it prior to the...
I think the only city that's adopted the Model Code was Forest Grove, but I could double-check on that.
Okay, well, I think it's important to get it right, so I'm happy with taking as much time as it is and as much public input to make sure our codes are current and as forward-looking as possible. Commissioner Neely?
First of all, I appreciate the fact you're not asking for a date certain anymore. The request I have is that maybe sometime before it comes to us, I would like to see the recommendations that the Natural Resource Council put forward for the three ordinances and any applicable recommendations that had come from that body, too.
Yeah, one thing we're talking about is the possibility of a work session, perhaps. Are we still scheduled for November work session?
With the Planning Commission?
No, with the city commission.
I think we've tried not to have one because of the conflict in dates for November, so maybe December?
We could try that.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Then may I have a motion, please?
You already have one.
Oh, I do, we did, oh, that's right, Damon and Doug. Okay, further comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next, we move into the consent agenda, and we'll take Items A, C, D, and E first. We have a motion for approval.
Move, okay.
Moved by Commissioner Tidwell, seconded by Commissioner West. On the consent agenda, Nancy, please, the vote.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Then we will consider separately the Restrictive Covenant Non-Remonstrance Agreement for the My Mother Knows Project on Lynn Avenue. And Commissioner Neely, questions?
Whenever, to my, the best of my recollection, when we've had these restrictive covenants, non-remonstrance agreements, they've been for subdivision developments and so forth, and I guess I'd like to have some discussion of what's involved here because it looks like it's only a single lot involved, and maybe you could have some explanation. But let me first put my understanding of what the intent of these were. One of the big concerns is that where there was a potentially important public project that needed to be pursued and might be pursued through an LID, I'm trying to remember what it means.
Local improvement.
Local Improvement District, which requires the support of the community at hand, and if we had a new development coming in, that may not have been in tune with those needs, it may go down for that reason. I think that was the motivation that the Planning Commission put forward, and they recommended to do that, doing that. This seems to be a single lot, and I'm just wondering, what about the nature of this particular development would want us to put forward this, the Restrictive Covenant Non-Remonstrance Agreement?
My understanding is it's because it's a commercial development.
So it probably had some impacts whereby the staff thought that it was necessary to get these waivers of remonstrance so that if you wanted to place a sewer or water line down the street, that this would enable it to happen. It doesn't require it to happen, and in fact, the condition has been imposed and the appeal period has run. All that's required now is that you accept it or not.
Well, I mean, would normally a single property owner like that be able to stop that kind of procedure?
You can, lawfully can impose it, and again, the issue is, is there, these other folks who did the work, is there an anticipated need to get water or sewer or those other facilities there that would allow you to impose this requirement so that you could get the work started and have the other properties along the road bear their fair share as well?
In answer to your question about, would one property likely hold up a local improvement district? Not likely, but if you, you know, one plus two, plus three, you can, if you amass enough singles, you can all of a sudden, depending on how large the boundaries of the district are, and so what we like to do is get them from all site plan and design review applications and subdivisions.
Standard operating procedure.
Standard operating procedure.
Do you have further questions?
No, that was a question.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
No, I wouldn't.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
I, I move approval of the Restrictive Covenant for a non-remonstrance agreement for the My Mother Knows Project on eleven oh five Lynn Avenue.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Mayby. Is there further comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four one. That concludes our business agenda, and under communications, we'll begin with our city manager, Larry Patterson.
Madam Mayor, I do have a few things this evening. First, you have a hard copy, I also sent it to you on email of my manager's report, and I just want to touch on a few of those items. Should be one there at your place. God, I have an extra copy here.
No, I got it.
First thing I want to deal with is the economic crisis and how that may relate to Oregon City. Let me first indicate that my crystal ball is no clearer than anyone else's, but there are a few indicators that I think bear watching from Oregon City perspective. One of the issues that you have heard being talked about on the news is foreclosure, and I've given you some statistics here, just looking at Clackamas County, and as we relate to the region, and I think what you'll see is Oregon City or Clackamas County and Oregon is faring a little bit better than other parts in the nation, and I've given you some latest statistics that we could get, which are from two thousand and seven, and you'll see that we're running anywhere from a third to half of where some of the other regions in the nation are falling. More importantly, though, the fear is that as you see numbers of foreclosures, that results in a downturn in the assessed values, which results in a decrease in taxable value, which results in a decrease of projects and services that a city can provide. One of the beauties, and there's not many, of Measure fifty is Oregon has a little bit of a buffer there because the real market value and the taxable value are different, and so for a downturn in assessed values that have an impact in terms of that revenue generation, is you're going to have to see that fall somewhere between forty and fifty percent, I think Mr. Wimmer indicated, I think it's forty-eight point three or something like that percent that you're going to have to have that fall. Now, I will indicate, though, that our financial projection that your annexation plan was put forward on is based on a five and a half percent AV growth, and so if the AV growth, if we do not have growth in, or limited growth in the Oregon City area, that's going to have an impact on that annexation plan, have an impact in terms of what that plan, actually how far it will stretch and what we'll be able to provide as we discussed, and that's going to bear watching. As you recall, we have been seeing an assessed value growth here over the last few years around six and a quarter percent, so we've actually had a little bit greater growth than what our projections were based on. Of course, growth also has an impact in regards of SDC collections, and so if those fall off, and they are definitely looking like they're going to be down this year, some of the projects we have on the CIP, we're not going to be able to get to in the timeframe which we had projected. Kind of the upside to that is without some of the growth, some of those projects probably can be delayed some. Now, normally with CIP projects and SDC, we usually plan catch-up versus ahead because of the way the money comes in, just the way the system works. The other area that bears watching is building permits. Those are considerably down from last year, and that has implications all the way through the planning and development process because if revenues are down in community development, to maintain service levels there, it's going to require greater subsidy from the General Fund, which has impacts on other General Fund services. The, another indicator that we're looking at is unemployment, and I've given you some statistics there. The August unemployment rate for Clackamas County was five point five percent. That's lower than the Portland metropolitan area, which is at six point one percent. However, it's point nine percent greater than August of last year, and it's point four percent greater than July of this year, so, you know, that does indicate that we're seeing greater unemployment. That's going to have an impact on some of our citizens' ability to pay for some of the services. That'll have some impacts in water and sewer and what have you. Municipal bonds could become a little harder to come by, or at least to carry a little higher interest rates. That has some implications for some of our bigger projects, primarily rivers and Primary Rivers and Cove could be impacted by that. So there's a number of indicators that we're looking at. I think we're faring better than some of the other parts of the nation right now. But the longer this goes on and the further it goes, is the more impact it's going to be. And those are some of the things that we're taking a look at. The next item I want to touch base on is our pool painting. Our contractor has completed the painting of the outside of the pool and has begun to paint the inside, but we haven't gotten it all complete. And so we'll be waiting to the next shutdown period for the pool, which will come in December before we complete that project. But I do have some pictures here, so I'll let Nancy flip through those. You'll see some before and after pictures of some of the various areas of the swimming pool. That doesn't really show up. Let me dim the light just a little bit.
Those are good-looking pictures of the swimming pool.
I'll pass these around, which may give you a little bit of...
Must be before.
What you have there.
There we go. There we go.
Those are before pictures.
Well, when you see, when you see these, you'll see the difference. And I would, I would indicate that you should drive by there because I think you'll find there is quite an improvement in regards to what had been done there.
That looks very nice.
The next thing I want to point your attention to is the City Hall process. That's item six. You kind of look, first of all, you'll see the various steps that we need to go through just to ensure that we've gone through a competitive process to acquire the type of services and then the type of steps that's going to be, have to be taken after that, which is going to take us, looks like, for a move-in date somewhere around August or September of next year. I'd like to move faster, but I'm not the ones who have written all the laws that we have to adhere to. And it becomes somewhat cumbersome as well as really stretches out the process. So just want to point that out. And then the next item I want to point out is City Hall Day, which is going to be held on the sixteenth, October sixteenth, at 5:30. That will be in the Carnegie Center. That is a, an open house in which various city officials will have the opportunity to meet and greet our legislative, state legislative delegation, as well as candidates running for that, and discuss issues of concern to cities. And the league has supplied some of those key issues, but there may be some things, too, from an Oregon City perspective, that we want to visit with them as well. And so again, we want to kind of coordinate that with our fellow cities that are going to be attending that. But right now, looking like that's going to be fairly good attendance without the Oregon City contingent yet identified, or those who are going to be attending. I think there's already thirty folks who have indicated they wish to attend that meeting. So this is...
There's one in Estacada also the same week.
There's a number around...
Who's in charge of it? Who's actually leading it?
We are. Oh, leading it? No, I need to coordinate that with you. We're just arranging it right now.
I was concerned about that.
We're just coordinating the meeting right now. We haven't gotten that far because it's been one of those things. Nancy's been kind of putting together legwork on it, and I just haven't had a chance.
Okay, I sent, I sent a reminder around through C4 twice, so it should have reminded the cities of the need to do that. Because I know there's a choice. Citizens can choose to go to Estacada or Oregon City.
We need to remind Salem that they better send us more money or we'll pull their plat and then they'll be an unincorporated city.
Yes.
Advantage of being moved.
And Madam Mayor, that concludes the remarks I have on the report. There's some other items on there. If you have any questions about that or anything else, be glad, glad to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Patterson? Yes, Commissioner West?
I would just like to pass along, or Scott, can you pass along to Denise? If she picked out these colors by herself and maybe a computer program with a photo of the building, she did a great job.
She did.
I like the update. Please tell her...
Thank you, I'm welcome. And yes, she credited Denise for those color selections.
Yeah, because I know she was going to make them.
And I've forgotten how long it's been since this has been painted?
Too long.
Ten years?
We don't know for sure.
Anyway.
Long enough to know that we don't know.
We encourage citizens to drive by and give us their opinion.
That sure beats the pink and green that Scott was going to pick out.
Thank goodness for Denise. Okay, next, Commissioners, you have communications. First of all, I would like to appoint Brian Watts to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the term October first, 2008, to December 31st, 2010. And now, reports from Commissioners? Commissioner Neely?
We have had another Clackamas, excuse me, no, that's not correct. We have had another Rural Order Reserves Policy Advisory Committee for the County Board of Commissioners. As you've heard in previous discussions, there were issues about whether or not that study area should have a buffer put north of Molalla. The, our group, in fact, supported that particular buffer. We felt that any discussions in terms of what could be urbanized or not urbanized around Molalla should be Molalla's basic decision and not Metro's. And Molalla can be, and those entities are not part of Metro. One way or another, those issues were resolved, I think, for the other communities, but they weren't really resolved for Molalla, so we're supporting Molalla's request. Again, Damon Mayby is our representative to the Clackamas Heritage Partners. He was not able to meet the, make the last meeting. There is a shareholders group that's coming together to look at the plans that would be put forward under a consultant, Jones and Jones, is that correct? To actually look at the potential access and development of the Falls resource in connection to the Museum of the, excuse, Museum of the Oregon Territory. And so there is a stakeholders meeting that's planned for that, for that presentation.
And I believe Larry and I are both going to that on October 7th, I think it is.
From one to four.
Do I know us? Am I supposed to do something?
The invitation has also been extended to the two of us because we represent the City at the Heritage Council.
Commissioner Tidwell?
I want to talk a little about conversations with the Commissioner. At our last meeting, we had to postpone the October meeting for work sessions, et cetera, that were planned on that. Unfortunately, the location that we have, that is in the Trails News and is on my website, unfortunately, for personal reasons, Acme Coffee and Gifts has had to close their doors. So we will be having to find a new location for that, which is very unfortunate because that was a wonderful business and really brought an eclectic look to the streets, to the city, excuse me. So that's, will be difficult. And they were very generous with their time in regard to our conversations with the Commissioner. I do have another location that we will be going into, so you can, it's not a city sanctioned event, always remember that. So it's my event, so you can go on my website, trentidwell.com in about a week and find out where the new location will be. I think I pretty much got one. I think it's, I think we'll, well, it'll be just on that, we'll announce it there. So just look at that for those of you that come to that, and many of you do, and we'll move on. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner West?
Well, I have a few reports to give. Commissioner Neely and Mayor Norris and myself, we're all at the C4 Retreat last week, and where we all signed an oath to sing kumbaya together for the next year. Just kidding, we're all working peacefully with our partners. That's what that meant. Bad joke. Okay, so I'm disappointed, I didn't know that the coffee shop was closing, but...
There may be new owners.
Well, well, that's...
Well, I'm just saying it because I'm going to, last week, we had our Oregon City Tourism Group meeting. And some of the things that were reported on were how tourism was in Oregon City this summer. And most of our facilities reported tourism being down. And the Lock Fest business was down, the Riverside business was down. So the economy's probably playing a part in more ways than one. Some good news, trolleys are really being ridden a lot more compared to a couple of years ago. They're just going up and up. And I don't know if you all have heard, that we bought our, purchased our, are purchasing our third trolley to keep an even tighter schedule and maybe even offer more stops next year. We'll see. That's one of the things this group helps plan, too. We have another new group in town called Oregon City Main Street. You heard about that a little earlier this meeting, this evening. And we have, that is another goal of ours, to keep, work in their, the Main Street Program with our Tourism Group. We're also working, this group is going to contribute with our Oregon City 150th, which is my next report to give up. So we're, a lot of tourism, tourism goals in Oregon City. So Oregon 150, we had our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And the Oregon 150 is about the State of Oregon's 150th Birthday coming up in January. And the theme of it is appreciate the past, celebrate the present, and imagine the future. So we've been creating events and ideas to go along with this theme. So I'll give you my latest update. We have a brochure that we're going to work on that'll have 150 things to do in Oregon City in 150 days. We have our website up, not, not too much more than that, and that is oc150.com. However, if you care to be involved in any of our volunteer activities, and we'd love to have your input, we opened an email for that. And that's our coordinator's, Barb Streeter. And the address is oc150info@gmail. So there's still a few opportunities to chair projects. We, should I go through more projects? Well, anyway.
We'll put up on the website.
Pardon?
We'll put those up on the website.
Okay, the projects will be on the website. We'd love to have your input. And we did add a new event, though, this week, to our 150 days. And that's, we were at another meeting, our Main Street meeting, with Janet, oh, I don't have her last name, Malik, from the Paper Mill in Oregon City. And the Mill's also having their 100th anniversary this year. So we're really rounding out a lot of events to, fun things to do in Oregon City for Oregon's birthday next year. Thank you.
During those 150 days. Okay, I have several reports, too.
And their color coordinated.
Color coordinated reports. So first of all, the, I would like to thank our staff for the elevator dedication on Saturday. It was an amazing event. There may have been, I don't know, 150 to 200 people that wandered through. Staff put it together beautifully. Universal praise for the artwork and for Michael Asbell, who flew in with his family from New York for the day. It was truly wonderful. And John Lewis is our Public Works Operations guy's daughter, who eighth grade with this amazing voice. She and her pianist provided wonderful, wonderful entertainment.
That's Sean's daughter?
It is John Lewis's daughter. Yeah, yeah, she's entertained it quite a few city events, and we hope, I look forward to having her grace our stage again at our next opening. Anyway, that was, it was just quite spectacular. So we urge citizens to use that elevator and see those wonderful lenticular prints. They're unique in the metropolitan region, if not the state. So that's, that's pretty special.
And I'd like to thank Dairy Queen for providing lots of ice cream. It was a hot day.
Dilly bars. Yeah, those dilly bars were, were great. Again, another true partnership between many levels of government, as well as citizens and other, and businesses. So that was great. And then it also went along with the Drive Less Save More Walk. And there were, I don't know, thirty to thirty, forty? About forty-five citizens who did the walk in, one of the fifty walks in the Drive Less Save, Drive Less Walk More booklet that's available through Metro. And I don't know if it's available through the city. Do we have some at our desk?
We still have some. Yes, we still have some.
Okay, it's, it's great. We walked through, it was a guided walk through the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and we had a very, very knowledgeable guide. And it was a really terrific day with lots of good giveaways, including a pedometer for those of us who wish to keep healthy in the, in the days to come. Then thirdly, MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee, had a lot of things happening. I'm going to give you reminders of some things. October 8th is our regional forum. I hope you're all planning to attend that. Also, soon after that, we'll be getting our population forecasts. And that will help, it's supposed to happen in mid-October, so I don't think they're going to have it by the 8th, but that will give us the population that Metro has projected, along with PSU forecasting, what we are to expect in our area. Should enable our planning staff also to begin, to continue our projections. We also were introduced to the reorganization of Metro. You probably read about that in the newspaper, but Metro is now reorganized into departments and including a, I'd like to have this for the city, a Strategy Center. And this is kind of a think, I'll pass this around, I only have one. It's essentially a think tank for Metro's work, especially have responsibility for MPAC and JPAC.
That's Larry's office, and he's the...
He's our Strategy Center, that's for sure.
We do the thinking at the bottom of the tank that Nancy built down here on Molalla.
Oh, the reservoir. Yeah, that's a big enough, that's a, that's a big enough tank for good thinking. And another piece of work that that Strategy Center will be working on, as well as all of Metro and all of us, because Metro is us, the 2040 Plan, that unique and creative, unique in the nation plan that guides all of the growth in the metro region, it needs to be amended in 2010. So that's certainly work that will be for the future. The Big Look, many of you probably saw this in your local newspaper last week. The Big Look has finished, I'll pass this down to you guys, look at this, too, has finished a lot of its public hearings. There will be no more public hearings in the Portland area, but there are 500 kits for home play. So if you and your friends want to get together, get a meeting in a box, you can talk about how you wish to have growth, and you can make your public comment and ship it to Metro. So meeting in a box...
Too much money.
Does that come with a gun?
There are only 500 left, only 500, so get yours quick. The comments that they have been hearing around the state is that as we do resource protection, we have lands identified as farm and forest lands, which essentially will probably be our rural reserves. We have lands designated as urban reserves, and we have the stuff in the middle. And it's been agreed that the stuff in the middle needs a name. Otherwise, it's sort of like unimportant, or is it not-wanted land, or what?
That's Strategy Center.
Well, there you go. And then the other kind of disappointing news, I think, is that the future of the, of the Big Look may stretch over two legislative sessions. And we had questions about how that was going to work because to have this statewide committee doing two years' worth of, actually, I think it's three years' worth of work, two years' worth of work, anyway, on coming up with recommendations, how do they get implemented? Well, DLCD will partly be champions, but they're hoping to find legislative champions who will take it to that next session. So it'll be in the 2009 session and also in the 2011 session as well.
Maybe we should call it the Long Look.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
It will be the Long Look, definitely. And then lastly, at the Urban and Rural Reserves Meeting, Beaver, the hamlet of Beaver Creek has been, has spoken each time on the concerns of the rural unincorporated area. And I was going to make copies of you for these, but I didn't get around to it. So I'll pass these around if you'd like to see the, what they've been saying. Just sort of, don't forget us. The concerns of rural people, people who live in the rural areas are very different than the concerns of people who live in the, in the urban areas, or the unidentified lands in between. So they have been very good about making, making their, their points on that. And I think that's essentially sort of the summaries of the meetings at Metro. And hopefully, we'll see you all on October the 8th for the regional meeting on, which is entitled, "The Future Is Here, Is Business As Usual Good Enough?" Any further reports? With that, we are adjourned.